Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our informal session and we're going to go ahead and get started. Mr. Dehaney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, staff is going to start the presentation by giving you an introduction to our owner's rep. And this is part of the ongoing exploration of alternative partnership models for the aquarium.
Welcome.
Perfect. So I will just introduce our owner's rep. Just a reminder for the public, I'm good, thank you, Mr. Manager. This has been about a 14-month conversation in which council is just trying to have data-informed conversations. You all are using qualitative and quantitative data to give you as much of a complete picture as you can, as you all think about what's the best way to set the aquarium up for a sustainable future. When I was doing the research on different operation models, whether I was talking to an aquarium, or zoo, or a private entity, folks would ask, "Have you talked to Rick?" So I'm so excited today that we have Rick here, who is our owner's rep. Rick has provided insight to more than 100 AZA-accredited institutions. So that's nearly half of the institutions, we're okay Raven, I'm just going to blow, over half of the AZA-accredited institutions. And he consults with them on a wide variety of issues, whether it's just strategic planning, organizational planning, but also a subset of his body of work is really specifically on governance, planning, governance model, governance transitions. And he's been part of more than 20 governance studies, plans, and transitions. Currently, he and his team are working with Abu Dhabi Zoo. So he is internationally known for this work. Rick has led an AZA institution himself. He has really assembled a very impressive team of folks who not only have consulting experience, but they are C-level professionals from AZA-accredited institutions. One, John, when he was leading an AZA-accredited institution, two of the exhibits were the highest-scoring AZA exhibits in the history for that particular year. His person that's working with us really deeply on our financials is the former CFO for Atlanta Zoo. So these folks just are well-versed, well-experienced in this. So we're just excited because as you continue to have these conversations, we want to make sure you have access to the best information. And bringing Rick on board really takes the access and the resources you have to really an unparalleled level when it comes to the caliber of knowledge and experience. So with that, Rick's going to come up, he's going to give you a few slides, and it's really just an opportunity for you all to meet with him. He's already met with our leadership, the council liaisons, as well as the chair for the foundation board. So he's had visits to our aquarium and to our staff. So I'm going to get you started, Rick, and looking forward to your presentation.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Monica. I might have you right, some of my, all of my opening lines at this point, but yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and chat with you today. And it's really just a conversation that we're going to have. And again, I'm going to say thank you, I'm going to say thank you for two reasons. One, for allowing me to come here today and spend a couple of days in your beautiful city. This is my only second visit to Virginia Beach, April was my first. And I will say I'm very, very impressed, sort of one of those places that it's not on the way to someplace for me usually where I traveled to. But I've had a wonderful two days here and appreciate that. The other thing I'm going to say thank you to for is for you, for your leadership in looking and doing your due diligence and looking at the governance opportunities with the Virginia Aquarium. And I say that because it's really important that leadership, right, always looks at we're, you know, being relevant today, because if the world's changing, things are changing so fast. A lot of leaders don't take that opportunity. But I'll share with you that the trend among AZA institutions is to look at how they're operating, governing, and not only today, but really setting it up for the next five, 10, 25 years. There's a huge shift, and you're going to see in the next probably five to 10 years, particular zoos really shifting away from the current models that are out there into more of a dynamic, what I'll call it, governance relationship, where you'll have revenue and mission delivery. You always have those two key components. You have someone who understands the revenue side, so it understands the mission delivery side. So I just sort of set that up, but I want to acknowledge the fact that you are taking on this study. I'm honored to be able to have myself and my team lead this study for you, because there's lots of success, there's lots of options that you have. The question here for us as we go forward is, what's the right option for Virginia, Virginia Beach, Virginia Aquarium, Virginia Beach? So, you know, there's, I always say this, there's about 245 accredited zoos and aquariums out there, there's 245 different models, because they're all different. Some charge for parking, some don't charge for parking, some charge a high admission price, some charge a low. So it's how they're, but it is true that there is 245 different models out there. So I'm going to go through this, let's see here. So Monica was nice enough to give me that intro. What I always tell people is there's a lot on these slides. I just tell you to look at the bold print and the underline print. That's sort of the key factors here. But myself, I have actually four years of experience working with zoos and aquariums, and really helping organizations look at being relative, being relevant, excuse me, creating strategic direction as we go forward today. Monica indicated that I'm sort of blessed with a team of folks that work with me, that have been leaders, are, continue to be leaders, and looked upon as leaders within the AZA institution. I'll skip over some of the things, but we've worked with small institutions and large institutions. We work with, in the case of the Alain Zoo in Abu Dhabi, I mean, it's about $125 million entity today. And it's really sort of an interesting one, because the government subsidizes about 90% of that number. Only happens in Abu Dhabi. But it's really sort of an interesting model that we're going to take it out of government control. The other thing within the industry, what we as a firm provide is a comprehensive array. So we just don't do governance studies, we provide strategic guidance. We were the ones that created the executive leadership program within the AZA, which sets up the future leaders of our institutions. We're recognized leaders, as Monica indicated, in looking at how AZA institutions are operated. So we look at, as Monica indicated, we've done over 21 of these governance studies. Most of those have resulted in transitions in some regard. In addition, we also go through the outsourcing of, looking at the outsourcing of food, retail, catering, any of those services, even maintenance and operations, because that's one of the other shifts that's occurring within the industry. Okay? So we have this wealth of information. I share with you that our role with you is we're a resource to you, right? So you should ask questions as we go forward, not only today, but in the future, right? And we'll provide you with the information, right? And whether, if we don't have it, we'd be happy to get it for you. Okay? So let's just talk about some of the objectives, just at a very high level here, that this is a forward-looking process. What's occurred in the past has occurred in the past. Someone said to me a long time ago that, "Don't look backwards, you're not going in that direction." And I firmly believe that, right? So I think it's really important that this is a forward-looking process. We want to understand who the Virginia Aquarium is today and create a roadmap to move forward, give you options, right? One of the bases of that has been talked about is the MOU, Memorating of Understanding between the city, the foundation, and ourselves, so that there's clarity on what is being communicated. I hope that we can get this executed quickly, so that we can move forward with our analysis. It really is a due diligence exercise, right, that reflects good governance. So again, there's no predetermined outcomes. There's an opportunity for us to look at a number of options with you and determine the best option to move forward collectively, right? I always have said this too, is that we have to look at win-win opportunities. Win-win-win-win. So it's win for the city, win for the foundation, win if there's a partner involved. It has to be, right? You don't do shifts in organizations on the backs of our employees, I'll say that, that's what my term, we do it because our most valuable asset are our employees. The animal side says the most valuable is the animal collection, I say our most valuable asset is our employees, and we have to protect those, right? So our role is to challenge the thinking, is to ask why, is to create viable outcomes that are relevant in today's market, right? And it's really shifting, so, which is great, right? We can be part of it, you can be part of this. You are not cutting edge from the standpoint that this has been done before in the zoo and aquarium world, so you're not out-leading, but how you will manage your facilities going forward has the opportunity to be leading, okay? Really important. And then, as I mentioned, the dynamic, what we call a dynamic public-private partnership, there are the three Ps, that they'll continue to evolve and develop within our industry. You're going to, as I mentioned, see this model shift within the 245 institutions that are out there, okay? So let's just talk about outcomes at the high level here. Some of this I covered already, but there are, as I mentioned, there are no predetermined outcomes. We come in with our knowledge base and we do our analysis. And we're really good at it, once we get the data. And as Monica and her team know, we've asked a lot of questions, right? We continue to dig and dig and dig, because it's not only important to know how many people are coming to the aquarium, but who are they, right? How are they from a paid, to a member, to a guest, I mean, to a group, to a member, right? All of that data is really important, that we need to have it available to us, so that we can think through the various models with you. It's really important, as I always call it, I add the word "right fit," it's always important that, whether it's the right-fit leadership or the right-fit partnerships, everybody needs to have the right role as we go forward here. That is the city, the foundation, and the potential partner. As I indicated before, is that there's always, there's a place for everyone, right? As I mentioned before, we don't do it on the backs of our employees, in most cases you're hiring more employees, because there's a whole series of indirect services that are provided for that potentially wouldn't be provided for in the future. So you're going to be hiring more people, right? So, and if you look at all of the models that are out there, even if you look at the 21 that we've done, that if you go back and talk to those 21, I think you'll find that most people will say that none of them have come back to quote "the dark side" yet, as I would refer to it as, but it's, there are successful models that everybody's really pleased with, right? And the employees are going to be happy, they're usually well-paid, better paid, there's better benefits, there's all a series of work, probably some improvements. So it's really important that we look at that this is not done on the backs of our employees. And as I mentioned, what we're looking for is the best operating model. Yes, there's lots of different models, but it's what's the, it has to be viable and sustainable as we go forward. And I use those two words, and I don't use those two words lightly, but they has to be viable and sustainable, right? You can't just be viable, you got to be sustainable at the same time. Okay? Here's the timeline from April through December. This is, you know, what, eight, nine months? I'd share with you that typically it's a six-month process. We've done them as fast as 90 days, because of unique circumstances within the city. But typically, it's a six-month process. We are today, we're really have addressed the first, or working on the first three bullets you can see. We had our site visit, as I mentioned, back in April. I did have an opportunity to walk through the aquarium yesterday on my own with my wife, sort of had my 40, 50-minute experience there, sort of saw it again without having aquarium staff with us, which was enlightening to look at it from the guest experience side, because one of the key programs that's going to be looked at is the guest experience here, that we've got to continue to enhance and grow the guest experience, that we're working through those. We've had discussions with the city, had conversations with the foundation chair. Hopefully, we'll have further conversations with the executive committee, with the foundation upcoming, and then be able to create this baseline financial model, which is a consolidation of both the city and foundation's numbers. The, from there, you begin to identify expectations, and then begin to have, once you understand expectation, we begin to have one-on-one conversations with the various partners. The rest of it is more technical from the standpoint of an MOA, Management Operating Agreement. That's what you would create, that's the backbone of any public, any 3P program. The goal is to have this completed in December. I anticipate that if we get the MOU executed, we'll be able to move forward and meet those deadlines, okay? I also see that we'll continue to have conversations, not only with you, but with, obviously, with the city and the foundation throughout this. The two last slides at a high level here, I would just share with you, these are my terms, when I say that the aquarium has great bones, that's a good thing, right? I mean, yeah, they're old, there are some deferred maintenance issues, but they can be addressed, right? That the experiences that I saw, and also from a mission delivery, what you do from a stranding side was great, wonderful, how to expand it. Share with you yesterday that one of the things I was impressed with was the volunteers at the aquarium. Probably interacted with 10 volunteers yesterday. Every single one of them had the same attitude, same sort of approach to servicing the guests, right? Very engaging, very personal, very knowledgeable, which is great, because volunteers are, you know, they're just like staff, right? And they are staff, right? And how they deliver that message, I was very, very pleased. What we see is the opportunity, as I mentioned, to enhance the guest experience, keeping it fresh, keeping it engaged. We do all of this in the highest quality of animal well-being and animal care. The term being "animal well-being" is the real term that's out there today. And then the opportunity to enhance the mission delivery. So that's the conservation, the education, the stranding impacts, right? Some of this is just, you're just beginning to scratch the surface with, right? But those three things are really, really important, and how do we position that for future growth will come out of this, our assessment. Last, I'll just share with you the short-term next steps. As I indicated before, I hope to finalize the MOU with the city and foundation with RSNS. Finalize this baseline financial model, which is consolidated, city and foundation revenue and expenses. We have done our, most of our due diligence on the city side, and hopefully we'll have a conversation with the foundation shortly. And then defining expectations of the options, if you will, from the terms of the city, the foundation, and if there is an operating partner, what those expectations are, sort of expectations and roles. And then lastly, I'd say is that, you know, I would anticipate that sometime in August or September, we'd be back in front of you, giving you a project status update, so that you hear what we've learned, share with you our thoughts at that point, and continue this open and transparent approach. So at that, I will say thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, and I'm happy to address questions.
Any questions at this point? No questions? Yeah, okay, Chris, and then Amelia, and then Barbara.
Sure.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation, and I appreciate the time you spent here in our city. I'm a native, and the aquarium's near and dear to my heart, and also spent some time with a small company, DuPont, where subject matter expertise was quite important. And so I'd just have a few questions. Looking at your website, it appears you've only worked with one aquarium, is that true?
No. Yeah, so, I mean, websites, so currently, we work with Oklahoma City, it's a brand-new aquarium, coming online market, Detroit Aquarium. We worked recently with the Florida Aquarium, which is in Tampa, we did all their strategic planning just recently. Moat Marine, which is the brand-new aquarium that's coming online in Sarasota, coming online in 2025, it's $135 million new aquarium. There are at least four of them off the top of my head.
So two of which are coming online, and then two existing?
Yes, but again, there's 35 years, and so we don't show everything on our website at this point.
Of the 21 studies mentioned on page two, how many went to a for-profit model?
None of those yet. Technically, one.
One?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And then, outside of our liaisons, we haven't, we don't have much insight into this process. So who are your subject matter experts on the city side?
Again, I will say my contacts right now is Monica, so we deal with the city manager's office is our primary contact, and they coordinate our site visits and things of that nature.
And the reason I ask, because, oh, go ahead, Patrick.
Subject matter experts are all the different departments, right? So you got Public Works, who's over the facilities, then you have the aquarium facility staff, then you have the aquarium's financial staff, and you also have the city's budget and financial staff.
How many times have you worked to move from a nonprofit to a for-profit?
A number of those, both within the, as I mentioned, there's one aquarium, but most, you should know, that of the 245 accredited zoos, 95% are nonprofit managed, because the bigger ones are SeaWorld, Disney, you have Hershey and Ripley's, who am I missing? There's probably one other that are out there.
Yeah, I've had the privilege of visiting Gatlinburg and Ripley's, so. Who from the aquarium have you met with to gather data? Because we've had three presentations, at least three, and of those, some of the figures aren't consistent on our side, so do you have, have you met with anyone from the aquarium to actually gather data? Has that just been through our staff on the city side?
I think it's been through the managing director's office, and we have, unfortunately, I can't tell you all the names, you want to?
No, no worries. So councilmember Taylor, Sean Murphy, he serves as the business analyst for Aquarium, met with Kathy, who's the former CFO for Zoo Atlanta, who's leading the financials. Mary Twinstale, who used to be the CFO for the Aquarium. The Aquarium CFO has maybe been here three months or so, she's new. So Mary Ann has a longer tenure as the CFO for the Aquarium, so she's met with Rick's staff.
And then Sean.
For our facilities, Sean Bouvoir, Bouvoir's been meeting with him. And Brian Duffinall from Public Works, so the subject matter experts.
Excellent. Just two more questions. Have you identified, sir, what the true subsidy for the aquarium is from the city side?
No, not today.
Not yet, okay. And then last question, because you were, we've been talking about, you mentioned the employees, and again, a lot of these individuals live, work here. There's a recent resignation just this past week, and fortunately, that individual I had known since, from my alma mater, Virginia Wesleyan, very talented individual, and so since this process has started, there have been significant resignations and some morale issues. I've noted that you've been working with Greenville Zoo to transition for almost a year. What's kind of taken, what's been, why does that taken so long?
Oh, it's, again, it's a timing issue, is that, you know, not only in Greenville did we do the governance study, we've done, we're currently completing the strategic plan, we're currently completing the facility master plan. They're up for accreditation in September of this year, so all those documents need to be put together in one document for the AZA. So it is moving forward in a timely manner, but there are a lot of pieces to the Greenville.
Thank you, sir.
Amelia?
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I've been touching base with several of the foundation people. You mentioned the three groups, the partners, the city, the foundation, and potential operations. From what I'm getting from them, one of the first things came up, we are losing staff. And I know for your outcome, you're sure of future viability and sustainability for the Virginia Aquarium. So I would like you to talk a little bit more about that morale, as councilman just mentioned, to do with losing staff. For example, I asked them who, I mentioned person in charge of fundraising, and as you know, money is important as a driver. So you're coming into this, we'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And then the senior aquarist, and again, that is another important spot, because they take care of the animals, and that is some of their concern. I know there's the infrastructure, I know we have the buildings, but if we have all the buildings and we don't have the animals, what is it? So if you can address at least those three, and they're still concerned about whether we're going to privatize or what. So if you're going to work on this to make sure we have a win-win-win, as you've mentioned here, what are your tools?
So let me go backwards, and I think it's really important that we not use one word, which is privatize.
All right.
Right? Because it's not what you're doing, right? So you are looking at the best governance model, and privatization, everyone, when you say the word privatization, people go to a certain place, right? And usually, it's not a good place in many regards. So I would encourage you not to use that word. Okay? This is looking at the due diligence governance structure of the Virginia Aquarium, okay? The other thing I can't comment on is morale, because I haven't, we haven't talked to a lot of folks, and I, you know, that's something that maybe at some future date, I'm happy to comment on it. The issue with staff, that some of them I'm aware of, some of them I'm not, because, but, look, it's the number one issue that every AZA institution deals with. And the one thing I would share with you, within the industry, there is a lot of movement within the industry, within positions, because there's a subset, I mean, there's a limited subset of all of this, right? It's not like, okay, if I'm going to look for an opportunity to earn more money, or to have career advancement, I'm probably not going to find that job in Virginia Beach, right? So I'm going to go someplace else. The, we as an industry have recognized the importance of our staffs. And I think that the individual that you're referring to as the senior aquarist or senior husbandry, I actually think he went to a position that offered him better pay, better opportunities.
It is the truth of what they were saying.
So, I give, I applaud people like that, that want to have, you know, to advance themselves. The fact is, I'm 90%, I'm pretty sure I know where he went, I'm pretty sure his increase and his opportunity to advance his own personal goals. So I'm just very careful to share with you that, don't assume that the eight, or nine, or whatever, is always resigning because of this. People move because they move, variety of reasons, right? And I don't know these individuals today, right? But I would just share with you, don't make that linkage today, because there is a lot of movement. And we recruit within the industry, right? I mean, we are always looking for the next leader, whether it's at a curatorial level or staff level. And we're human nature, is that people want opportunities. So I would be very, very careful about making those connections. It very well might be true, but it is not true true today.
Well, I thank you for your clarification, because if the foundations who love the aquarium, and for them, they're feeling down, are you mentioning not using the P-word? That there may be other reasons why these people are moving, and you are capable down the road to bring in another aquarist? You know, these are things that are on their minds, and we want them to be satisfied, so we have a win-win-win situation. Don't you agree?
Correct. And again, you know, it's the people that make our institution successful, and it starts at the top all the way through. So we have to hire the best, and if, you know, and we just have to create the right options, whatever those options are, whether they, you know, I know that today, the city deals with a contracted labor pool, which is fine, it fills that need. We just have, but we always want the best, and we want people, I just would share with you, in the industry, I mean... you know, I've been fortunate and blessed in many regards for forty years to work in this industry. And I love this industry. And, and it's something that I'm very proud of to see what's happened. And the fact that you have passion is great, right? We, this is built on passionate people, right? So we have to energize that in the right way, right? But this is, you know, this is a great opportunity for you all, right? To look at the options and then to decide, will help you decide. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, I'm just going to tell you the truth.
I thank you for your optimistic, uh, you know, outlook on all of this. Because we all love to see the best of Virginia Aquarium. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, everybody around the table, I'm sure is nervous about what I'm going to say because I, from the very beginning, again, the one who's had questions. I'll wait until Mr.
I'm just going to grab some water here.
When you say that this is good governance, I just have to say I don't ever want to be anything like this again. This has been anything except open and transparent. We have not provided one single opportunity to get input from the public. All of this started in closed sessions for the first couple of months, which meant we couldn't talk about it to anybody, to tell them what was going on. All of this has been done at a level other than including the public. And this is, this is, if I could ever say was something of the people, by the people and for the people, this aquarium in Virginia Beach is that because it came from the people. And when you say not to look back, Mr. Biddle, that's a slap in the face to the thousands of volunteers over the last many years who have operated that museum in such a fashion that you just saw. I did provide an opportunity at my last forum because I put this on the agenda since I had not heard from the public. And I heard an impassioned presentation by a gentleman who has volunteered there now for over thirty years. It's been the public and the volunteers who have made that aquarium, not the city. And it's been the volunteers in our city who have created the foundation and who have raised millions and millions and millions of dollars to provide those animals and those exhibits. And now they tell me that they are at a total standstill. They can't do it anymore because of the way we have treated them and addressed this. I don't ever want to ever be a part of anything like this again. If we can pull this out, it's going to be a miracle. You've got to be a miracle worker. Because this is, this is just not the way we treat people who have done so much for us and for the city. It's, it's, it's a, it's a total lack of respect. I think as we said, we, that was said in, in an email to us uh, this week from, uh, from the uh foundation, that this is just not the way you treat people that, that have been your partner for forty years. This has been conducted in an extremely disrespectful to a forty year partner. And we have gone about this all wrong. And you say not to look back. Well, we've had a pretty dang good ride with this aquarium. All of our citizens' surveys over the years put the aquarium at one of the top things that they, they rate in the city, the high nineties. Our, our citizens, until we started all this, didn't know there were problems at the aquarium. They thought we had something good. Yes, it's going to cost a lot of money to bring the infrastructure up. But I believe the survey that we did take a little thing indicated that they would be willing to help pay for it with, with their taxes. And, and certainly the foundation would have been right in there raising money. But now they don't think they can raise money anymore. They're real concerned about anything they're going to be able to do. And, and we have all but destroyed them. And for all that they have provided this city over the last forty years, I am just sick. I am just sick. And I don't know how you're going to move forward and let folks know that they do have, we do have respect for them at the way they have been treated over the last year. And like I say, to be at this point and never have had one single opportunity for the foundation to speak to the city council or public to speak to the city council about this, we haven't. And that's not the way, I mean, I've been on the city council, people remind me for too long, forty years or thereabouts, and we have never done anything like this before. And I just hope we never do it again. You've got a big job in front of you. And I, I just had to say those things because it's the way I feel. And these resignations that have been occurring are because the people are, are looking for another job where they can have security because they are afraid that the city no longer cares about them or supports them. And that's why they have been resigning. And we can say all day long that it's not, but it is. So I, I just hope that going forward, we can do something to show the foundation that we do appreciate what they've done. But at this point, they're afraid that they can't perform. And we did get a letter from them a few months ago when we started this, when this all did become public, that they were afraid that their nonprofit situation does not allow them to do a lot of things that would need to be done. And I think as they have looked into it more and more, they have found that that is very true. And I know that those early things that were done were in closed session and we couldn't talk. But I, it seems that I remember, and of course, it would have been in closed session, we only got two or three responses when we asked if there were people interested. But I do remember one of them said if it was going to be controversial, they didn't want any part of it. And if I've just revealed something that was said in a closed session, then I shouldn't have, I apologize. But this is, this is not very popular with the public at this point. So you've got a big job in front of you. And you can, I, I, I always try to stay a little bit open minded, but you've got a lot to do to convince me that what we've been doing for forty years was not good. And, um, and, and I, I just want all of those people who have been a part of the aquarium all these years and the foundation to know how much I appreciate what they have done.
Thank you, Chris. Last but not least, sir, um, because it says due diligence and good governance. And in this exercise as you move forward, I encourage you to really talk to your subject matter experts and uh ask them if the proposed Rudy Loop project that you can ask them about, that we're going to get ready to spend sixty million dollars on, or a park that's just fine, forty two million, forty to forty two million probably on a parking garage, ask your subject matter experts if, if that's going to produce the same revenue that our aquarium does. Because if we were to take this to the public, which I don't know that if we have the appetite to do that because we would get a very clear answer, uh, there is not support to spend sixty there and to ignore the aquarium. Thank you, sir.
Hey, yeah, if I can respond, and I tell you what, you know, sometimes we have to, we have to respond in very unique circumstances. You know, we have to understand, you know, our fiscal challenges that we have now, especially with inflation. We're confronting that, yes, the aquarium, we value, this is an iconic, uh, not only to our city, not only to our region, but also to our Commonwealth and probably somewhat nationally. You know, and one of the things is that we have a brand new magnificent addition that's on. Uh, we have a, I believe, a forty year structure right now that is in need of significant uh things to do. And, you know, and the thing is to do is it's not a simple solution because once again, there are so many people involved. And I totally respect uh what the foundation has done over years. But in, in very tough economic times, it's rough to generate, you know, uh, you know, all the foundations that are out there to bring in monies that we need to do what we must do. So, you know, a lot of times that is necessary for at least, you know, um, discussions on a reorganization, a retooling, so to speak. And so I think, but once again, from my conversations and some recent conversations with some of the foundation members, you know, they just want to make sure that they're at the table and that, once again, that we explore all of the potential paths that could be out there. And then, you know, and they, and, uh, you know, some indications, they may be open to, uh, you know, a situation. Okay, you know, Worth, did you have something? Go right ahead.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to add on too, and I understand exactly. What I'm saying here in terms of, of good governance, good governance also, when this, the first building was, was built, opened in nineteen eighty five, it was the first building. And we have an agreement in place since then between the city and the foundation. The city to remind everyone, we're responsible for all the structure of the, the first building. Now it's the second building and the third building. It's a beautiful campus, it's a great, a great story. But we, the city are responsible for roof, structure, mechanical, electric, plumbing, parking lots, all things associated with keeping up and keeping this property in this attraction, the third or fourth or fifth most visited attraction in the state. And so we were asked to consider two hundred and fifty million dollars, two hundred to three hundred million dollars. And I've heard a higher number and I've heard a lower number. Regardless, I think we need to also consider that in our forecast financial, not only for the next year, but the next five years, fifteen years. And I think good governance also is to consider all options before we move forward.
And I think the point I was trying to make is that, you know, exploring the options and, you know, finding a common thing. Now, once again, we, uh, Mr. Behaney, we are pursuing, uh, pursuing the MOU at this point.
Yeah, we're working with the foundation and hopefully we'll be able to sign a MOU where we can partner together on this process.
Yeah, but, but once again, I think, you know, it's a, you know, sometimes actions like this are necessary out of necessity and unique, you know, circumstances. You know, once again, if, you know, I, you know, as I had mentioned to some members recently of the foundation, it was a kind of a sticker shock that you're at two hundred, three hundred million. You know, and, you know, especially with all the other, you know, considerations we talked about, you know, what the strong water is now and what, you know, the other obligations that we're going to have in trying to find a balance and equation, you know, to do all the necessary things that we have to do. But I think once again, if we can have the, you know, once again, I hate to use the metaphor, this is like the lump of clay that we have. And right now, we're going to have three hands trying to, you know, shape it into something. It's going to take time. And once, and then once we come up with some plans or viable options, that's the time to bring the public in. Not, not, you know, not at the beginning stages. We have to have something concrete that we have to show them at that point. And we, public engagement is definitely a big, much a part of this. Amelia?
Just want to ask, um, city manager, I at least listened again and the mansion, how much we, the city subsidy is. And they're saying it's more two point five. And I think city is saying more six to eight. Which one is the right?
And I think that's part of the reason why Rick is here, right? You know, is that the foundation has books that they don't, that are confidential, that they don't share with the city. You know, and then we have what we pay and what we receive, right? You know, so we know what we pay and we know what we receive. There's other part of what the foundation does that is not clear to us. And that's ideally why we're working to get, working together. And hopefully we'll be able to get to a MOU so we can get a better picture and we can share a more accurate picture to the city council and also to the foundation as well.
Okay, and on the last part, about the two hundred and fifty to three hundred million, and I asked them, what do you see as the real number? And they're saying maybe fifty to seventy million. That's a big disparity right there, so.
So I think the concern with that one is it doesn't take care of the other aging infrastructure, right? So what we hear with the fifty to seventy five is that's a new building in kind of the circle lot in front of where the aquarium is right now. But it doesn't talk about what's going to happen to the other structures that are going to be abandoned, which will still be a city liability.
Thank you for clarifying these points so that they can hear it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Biddle, thank you very much for your presentation. I just want to chime in on, on two quick points. I think the council and the public were brought into this conversation at a very early stage during our first council retreat, when we were presented with the ask for somewhere in, in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty or a million dollars. What was a difficult budget season last year? And what continued, I guess, into a, a, a budget season this year? So, um, that was a problem that was, that was laid out to us. It's all the other challenges that you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, we all have a tremendous amount of respect for the volunteers, for the people who worked at, at the aquarium, for the people who, you know, spent time, effort and energy forty years ago to make the aquarium even possible. And it, it is not, in spite of those forty years of effort that we're sitting here, it is, it is so that we can preserve the next forty years and beyond and with a, with a viable facility and the same wonderful amenity that, that both our residents, I mean, especially our residents. On a rainy day, that's, that's where I take my family and I know many of you do too. So this is, this is because we care about the aquarium and this is because we, we as a body felt necessary to, to explore any all options to, to help preserve that mission and to preserve that resource for us for years to come.
Anybody else at this point? You know, I think ultimately, you know, we have a three legged stool with, you know, we have to have equal legs on each one. And I think what we're talking about is the ultimate goal. And I think, you know, when we talk about long term sustainability and viability is what we are all going to shoot for. But I think at this point, right now, you know, with the engagement that you're going to help to facilitate, and, and I'm sure, you know, you know, lay some of the fears and concerns about, you know, even with the term privatizing, you know, you know, a better, more collegial approach that turns out to the ultimate win-win-win that, uh, you know, that we go for, that is going to really, hopefully, maybe even take the aquarium, which is really renowned even to a next higher level. And, you know, and once again, as Josh said, you know, think about the, not that we were addressing the, the fire, the prior forty years, but let's think about the next fifty to a hundred years and what it's going to take to really keep it operating effectively and efficiently, especially during times when we're going through, and all cities are going through, you know, budget challenges. So I just want to thank you for your presentation. It was very insightful. Thank you.
Thanks. Good.
Okay.
Ready on?
Our team.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, our director of emergency management, David Topczynski, affectionately known as Tops, will come and present to council the outlook for the hurricane season for twenty eight, for twenty twenty four. And as many of you all have heard, this hurricane season is said to be probably one of the most historic in terms of named storms. So we're going to make sure we enhance our efforts to get the word out about how you can prepare for hurricanes.
Hey, welcome.
Hey, good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. One second to set this up. I've bombarded you with the PowerPoint and our new coastal resiliency guide for hurricanes and storms that we've talked about quite a lot in the last couple of presentations. So thought it'd be nice to give you a copy of it. But I appreciate you having me here today. Hopefully, um, it shouldn't be too long, but give you a general update of, uh, what the forecast looks like. And then, as the city manager said, uh, what we've been doing to prepare year round and what we're ready for and our capabilities. So our twenty twenty four outlook came out recently from the National Hurricane Center. But eighty five percent chance of an above normal storm season. What that means is seventeen to twenty five uh name storms. They're saying eighteen to thirteen of those could be uh actual hurricanes at any level. And then four to seven major storms, which is category three or higher. That's a whole lot of numbers and, and a wide range because it's a forecast, it's an outlook. And we've all seen weather forecasts before. So, uh, they've got seventy percent confidence in this outlook. The reason that they are predicting a busy season is that conditions are expected to change and change rapidly. Very favorable is the term they, the National Hurricane Center uses for storm development. And they expect that shift um to come mid to late August. And it's that time and why they only have seventy percent confidence. So they expect it to be a rapid shift to uh conditions that favor hurricane development. If it doesn't shift rapidly, then If it doesn't shift rapidly, then we could see not as many storms. Some reasons for this, though, are we have near-record ocean temperatures since April. As of the end of April, the Atlantic Ocean Basin is as warm as it typically is in July. It's just staying warmer, warmer. And then La Niña conditions, which is, favor storm development, is expected to move in in August. And then that reduces those Atlantic trade winds, so storms can develop more quickly. At the end, we have to prepare. You could have one storm, and if it hits Virginia Beach, we have a problem. Or you could have 200 storms, and if they don't hit Virginia Beach or come close, then our city fared pretty well. Some changes that you'll see and you'll probably have questions on or get asked about is NOAA is introducing some experimental tools to deploy in August, which includes new forecast models, farther-out forecast models. You'll see an updated hurricane cone. So instead of just showing you the center of the track, it shows you the additional warnings and areas where the outer bands could hit and what you might experience there. An updated flood modeling tools also. So you may see those in, as a storm's approaching. Same type of information, just, just new updates from the weather service. But really, what we're here for today is what does this mean for Virginia Beach? And really serves as a reminder for our citizens and our businesses that you have to prepare, know where to get good information during a storm or before a storm, what actions to take when we're facing one. We're kind of long overdue. It's been a while since we've had a direct hit since, you know, Matthew caused us a lot of problems. But the last direct hit was really Isabel in 2003. For departments and city, city department, city functions, we prepare year round for storms, any storm, hurricanes, coastal storms, nor'easters, snow, you name it. If it's a natural hazard, we're on top of it year round. It's a good reminder that, hey, the threat's there and we're dusting off the plans and we're going through the exercises, which we'll talk about that we're working on. But we're prepared and we're ready for whatever is faced on us. Our focus really is that. It's building that resiliency year round on what impacts we might experience to our critical services and functions. How do we keep the city up and running? And how do we provide those critical services that our citizens and guests depend on and our businesses? And that's what we do year round. Emphasized a lot last year and I'll emphasize a lot again this year a couple of times, but it's really not just a direct strike of a hurricane. There's a lot of natural hazards that can cause issues for us. So the remnants of a storm, we've seen all that flooding last year from Idalia that came up inland, the western part of the state and the New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, what comes out of those heavy rainfalls. Over the last year, you've seen what a large rainstorm had did to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and what a tremendous amount of rain looks like. And just recently, the straight line winds in Texas and what it did to the high rises and the buildings out there. There's a lot of hazards associated with the outer bands of a storm, the remnants of a storm, or just any other tropical weather system. And that's what we're prepared for. So in addition to our annual citywide exercises that we do for hurricane season, we've taken a lot of steps to prepare for this year's season. So most important upfront is we've updated the shelter plan. We're near completion on that. And we have a full-scale shelter exercise plan for July. It's been a while with COVID since we've been able to set up the full shelters. We've practiced, we've tested the equipment, but to actually run through scenarios of managing the shelter, how to check residents in, managing an evacuation, and then getting them assistance. We are working to complete an evacuation decision framework as part of a multi-year evacuation plan, addressing community-level evacuations based off impacts and hazards and vulnerabilities for neighborhoods of what, what we think is going to impact them and where do we need to evacuate based off conditions that we think neighborhoods are going to experience. We have a disaster services contract we implemented, getting resources and helping to the city quick through our own contract. How do we get portable streetlights or vehicles, portable buildings, anything we, equipment that we might need to get to keep those services up and running as long as possible? That allows us to bring those resources in directly now without having to try to contract during an emergency when there's competition for resources. We're working with our, with the finance department to finalize a disaster recovery contract. And this specifically is to bring in a consultant to help us manage state and federal assistance, applying for gathering information. It's cost and, cost and revenue recovery under the public assistance program for federally declared disaster. A lot of IT modernization projects, building that resiliency. How do we gather information from across the city and from the community on the needs, types of assistance needed? And also what state and federal agencies, data and information they need to get assistance and then to track that. And those upgrades allow us to do that, including EOC upgrades and deployable command centers to allow us to more efficiently manage a response and also coordinate a recovery. We've talked about a lot, but the Virginia Beach coastal storm guides have been completed along with a personal preparedness plan template. It's put in information for specific to Virginia Beach in the hands of citizens and eventually businesses. We have a project we're getting ready to launch, or Sandbridge with the unique hazards, one way in and out, the vulnerabilities down on a barrier island to get refrigerator magnets to sign up for text alerts for just the Sandbridge community out to those homes down there, whether they be short-term rentals or residents. And then also partnered with ECCS is a, the beach reports that go out daily of trying to get our guests down there to sign up for those too. So they understand what conditions the ocean's like for the day. We have enhanced weather monitoring capabilities and decision-making support through Perry Weather. They enhance the National Weather Service reports. So while the weather service provides us broad across the region, Perry helps us really dial in to make decisions down at that community level and provide us real-time monitoring, going back to making those evacuation decisions. And then we have updated public alert and warning templates and ways to communicate with the public. And just to note, we are in the middle of a required four-year revision to the Emergency Operations Plan, the EOP. We anticipate that being presented in September to council for a formal adoption as required by state code. And then lastly, it's really the procedure and understanding the procedure that we follow when there is a storm approaching. And our goal is always to communicate across the city with our citizens, but also with council as early as possible and to keep you informed with accurate information. Emergency management is going to be your avenue for accurate, reliable information and to get your questions answered. And we really want you to understand the process. So much like with the tornado, if you understand our process, we can provide you with that critical information that your constituents and the citizens are asking and want to know. So the residents of your district have that information that they need. So really looking at the timeline is year-round, but especially during hurricane season, our staff members are keeping a close eye on, on the Atlantic basin and watching for storms. When a storm develops, about 10 days out is when the hurricane center will start issuing like tracks and warnings. It's really far out, but seven to 10 days out generally, we'll assign a staff member to watch that individual storm. That's their job to provide us updates, which will then feed up. We'll begin issuing a Virginia Beach specific weather briefings and provide those strategic briefings up to leadership. As confidence increases on the track and that it could possibly impact us, typically around five days out that happens. But again, subject to change, it's the weather. Could be sooner, could be later. Then we'll start adding and watching the excessive rainfall tracker, outlooks for rain modeling, and then modeling ourselves for storm surge and impacts, inland flooding, et cetera, working with the different departments. That's when we'll start doing our initial planning meetings and working through our processes with departments to implement preparedness plans and response protocols. And this really start getting set up. We'll hit public messaging hard, let them know where, what we're planning and what we're forecasting and what the city's doing to prepare for impacts. Pre-arrival, typically three to five days out, we're over 60% confidence at this point, most likely higher, that we know there's going to be an impact in this area, whether it's a direct strike or outer bands. But we could see, see some significant impacts. We'll start communicating those decisions out of evacuation orders, shelter openings, declarations of emergency for the city, requesting mutual aid or outside resources and activating those emergency contracts. So we can get those response and recovery pieces in place before we start to experience the impacts. And then post-storm, there's a lot of questions post-storm immediately. But our focus in that first one to three days after a storm is really assessing the impacts to our lifelines, which is the community, our services and the critical function of the government, determining the damages to our critical infrastructure and which includes our citizens' homes, conducting those damage assessments and then following up with a recovery plan and then activating the assistance that the citizens and the businesses need. So we can start requesting the state and federal thereafter. That's really the whole highlight that I have. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah.
Tops, the one thing I was curious about is the storm, this, this one here, the storm track, you know how we call it, European model. And I don't follow it as close as I used to, obviously, is the seven to the five that, you know, when we start, start where we really, those of us on one side start paying attention a little more, is that, is that more accurate than it was? I know we've been working on it. It's not.
It, it depends on the storm and who's tracking. There's so many variables and how many storms are out there. It's the weather, yeah.
That's when it looks like spaghetti still coming. We haven't improved on that.
No, so as that forecast beginning tightens and we have confidence in that 60% to 70% that it's going to come up the coast, could cross over and cause us inland and come across, that's when we really start getting into those decisions that we say three to five days out. That's generally, the last three category five hurricanes developed in the 48 hours before they made landfall. So, you know, they were only projected to be twos or threes. And then in the last 48 hours, they, they really quickly turned on them. So we do our best, but we always kind of go broad. We focus on the impacts and the time. So we typically don't say at five days out, we're doing X. We look at those forecast models and we really base that on the confidence in the track.
Follow-up, sir. The, so, okay, out of that, where it hasn't become any better, sorry. But is one, like we used, you know, we're seeing the European model, is one of them a little more, you feel a little more confident?
That's personal preference. We go, the official answer is we use the National Hurricane Center predictions because they're the experts.
I see his question.
Thank you, buddy.
Appreciate it. And Michael?
Thank you. I have some specific questions about District Three and particular Windsor Woods neighborhood and Princess Anne Plaza that you may or may not be able to answer. And I was looking around to see if maybe LJ was here. I don't see him here today. But, but if you need to follow up with me to get this information, then that would be perfectly acceptable. But as you know, I've served District Three, which includes Windsor Woods, the lakes, Princess Anne Plaza. And these are neighborhoods that were disproportionately impacted by the Hurricane Matthew event in 2016 in particular. But regularly experienced recurrent flooding and stormwater flooding and are directly impacted by storms such as this, particularly hurricanes, of course. And a lot of my neighbors and people that I talk to remain very traumatized by that experience, the damage to property, the interruption in life and all the things that they have to do in their lives, rebuilding, dealing with the insurance, living in hotels. So this is fresh in the minds, even though it was 2016, this event is, remains fresh in the minds of many of the people that I have the privilege to serve. And it's a responsibility that I take very seriously. And I'm also pleased that the city has made historic investments in flood protection, including as part of the flood protection program and other public works projects. So I guess the question remains, one, acknowledging that Hurricane Matthew was hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime storm event. And it was kind of a combination of factors that led it to be such a dangerous situation. Could you all talk about, and again, if you need to follow up in greater detail, that's fine. Where are we today in terms of those neighborhoods and the flood protection program? There's been, I know, a lot of maintenance has occurred. We've got storm drains have been cleaned and vacuumed and resealed and caving repairs have occurred. And as well as there's been new piping, but there's also construction underway. And, and we know, I just was talking to a neighbor the other day about the closure of South Plaza Trail and the Presidential Boulevard Stormwater Project. And, and so, and, and part of Presidential is completely torn up right now. So what, what happens if there's a hurricane this summer? What's going to be the impact of the storm in this construction area? Do we have plans in place to address those things? I know that there's some improvement. Could you provide some detail about that?
Council on Recreation, this is, and I'll give you a preliminary response from my conversation with LJ. And Jacob's the city's program manager for the flood protection program on it. And then we'll make sure that as part of the presentation they're going to give in June, that they probably follow up with a more robust response to this. But, um.
We need it.
Yep, you know.
I know this presentation is not about Windsor Woods and Princess Anne Plaza, but for us it is.
Yep, but I'll say, although I hope we never get tested, right? And I hope this investment, this billion dollars in a flood protection program, and then probably the billion dollars that you're going to need to match for the coastal resiliency project never actually gets tested. I think everybody feels that if it were to happen today, the system will perform better because of all the work that we've done today from the maintenance standpoint, from the CIP standpoint to the flood protection standpoint. You know, we feel like we're in a better spot than if it were to happen today. My big concern is that as we move further away from Matthew, future councils and maybe the public won't realize the importance of what we're doing to help reassure that Virginia Beach can be the most climate resilient city in the East Coast. You know, but I think we're in a better spot from operation standpoint, from all the staffing, the equipment that you all gave us, and from all the significant CIPs we've done, in addition to what we're doing with the flood protection program. You know, but I'll make sure that Jacob's the program manager and public works staff is ready to more answer that question in detail.
I appreciate that. And just, Mayor, if I could, one follow-up to that. Let's take Presidential Boulevard for an example, because there, there's a lot of pipe replacement going on. So in the immediate area, what happens in that immediate area in the event of a major storm with major stormwater? Is there a diversion plan? I mean, I don't need to know every detail of it, but I'd be interested to know kind of what the public works approach is during construction. And, and I'm just using that as an example about the stormwater diversion. Or is there a functioning stormwater system, you know, in, in that area? Of course, we know that with the implementation of the Bo Creek Stormwater Park and other things, we're going to be in much better shape once the system is working holistically and cohesively, but we're not quite there yet. And I know when storms approach, I get a lot of phone calls from a lot of very concerned citizens about their property and about their life. And I've been on South Plaza Trail where people put poles with flags along their property line, along the curb to mark the roadway and to prepare for that type of flooding. And looking forward to the day we get past that. But I would appreciate all that information.
And then I do want to add one thing, Mr. Mayor, if I can get the luxury. Because of council's investment, last year, remember, we rolled out that online automated flood visual tool, right? And it basically, what it allows the public to do is look at all the 21 projects and look at the various location that their property is located on. And then they can overlay what Matthew did prior to the investments. And then you can put what the project would look, after your flood protection program is complete, what it would look like if a Hurricane Matthew happened again. You know, so that is a good way that the public can visualize the impacts of the flood protection program and how it can help relieve some of those flooding risks.
Hey, anybody else, Barbara?
Thank you. And I know you are on top of everything. And I really appreciate your comments about Sandbridge. And, you know, of course, we all know it's one way in and one way out, and they're very susceptible and a very important part of my district, and I really appreciate that. But we have also talked about that southernmost part of the district. Everything south of Creed's past Fitztown is also one way in and one way out. And all of those people on Knott's Island, one way in and one way out. And of course, most of them are North Carolina. We love them too. We have a portion in Virginia. And I assume we're working with Curt Hutt.
Yes, ma'am.
On, on whatever we're doing. But I know just, well, a couple of months ago, an accident coupled with a power line down on the road there, and the fire trucks could not get to a fire on Knott's Island. Something like that happening is very likely in a hurricane with a power line going down across the road, anywhere in that section. And people can't get out. Are we, are we prepared or are we preparing?
Yeah, so since then, we've done, that's the evacuation frame. What we're looking at is really looking at, while the state and federal look at coastal storm surge, we're looking at the big picture of communities like that. What, what could? looking at the big picture of communities like that, what, what could cause us to isolate this community, how would we get them out? So, we're looking at that wind and the rain to decide, hey, we need to evacuate this area because of XYZ outside of storm surge, and that's the point of the community evacuation plan that we're looking at. We do work with North Carolina Emergency Management and Currituck and planning for that, and then from all their conversations, and we've begun working with Dominion Power more closely, work groups, that Dominion Power work group includes Dominion, Fire Department, and also ECCS for how to manage calls and, and that, we work closely with Public Works and their planners and the stormwater folks to really model and, and make those decisions on evacuation routes and get away from looking at, there's a hurricane warning, we need to evacuate, versus, we're expecting to see winds and heavy rainfall, we should probably issue an evacuation order or stage equipment south of this line and make those decisions based off that, what, what we think's going to be impacted.
Well, I, I think, you know, just being able to get assistance to people on the island, if it's blocked, is an issue, someone with a serious issue on, on the island and are not being able to get to them, I hope we're looking at waterway access or, and everything else. Of course, if it's a northeast wind, it might not be anyone, so you just have to look at all of this, and when you look at the differences in the city of Virginia Beach and what you're having to plan for with the different way things happen in the northern part of the city from the way they happen in the southern part of the city, we have, you can't think that one way of doing something is going to address everything.
Correct, absolutely, and that's the approach we've taken for the last several years.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh.
Mr. Mayor, Tops, thanks for your report, appreciate it very much. Quickly, just two items, one, I know this hurricane and coastal storm report, we are experiencing more intense rain events, and one of those happened last night, the northern part of our city was inundated by a really severe thunderstorm. Today, I, I had an opportunity to tour, just for a totally separate reason, road safety and pedestrian safety concerns in Chesapeake Beach, a lot of low-lying areas, and I'll talk about one way in, one way out, that is another part of our town that I, that I really, I hope that is front of mind, along Pleasure House Road, and, you know, I, there was a evening several years ago that one of those microbursts just set right over top of us, and, and there was, there was some really, really, really severe flooding at that Commonwealth Brewery, so I just wanted to put that on your radar, no pun intended. And, and then the other question I had recently at a Roads Planning District Commission meeting, there was a question raised about the regional evacuation plan, what degree of cooperation, you know, is, is, is being undertaken by the, the various localities, I know we haven't necessarily tested that system in quite some time, but I just, again, wanted to put that to you and, and hope that there's coordination taken.
And we're very much involved in the Virginia, North Carolina, and the regional and the state evacuation planning committees, at the end of the day, we focus, we're focusing on Virginia Beach's community level, because we want to be able to, just like you said, no matter what area of the city's being impacted by rain, wind, et cetera, to make, be able to make smart decisions and tie that into those other plans. We're, we're not going to let the city be behind relying on other partners to, to do their exercise and plan, and so we're part of it, we're going to contribute as much as we can, and at the end of the day, we're going to make sure that we're out in front of what, and proactive to whatever we're facing.
And Mr. Mayor, to add to Councilmember Schulman's point and what Ms. Henley said earlier, in the budget that you just recently adopted, City Council did also give us investments that'll better enable the staff and all the public safety and all the operations department to communicate better about which streets are prone to flooding and which streets need to be addressed proactively, you know, so that'll be able to help us navigate things better. Currently, right now, staff basically does that via telephone, via text messages and other kind of things like that, but this will help, help ensure that regardless of who's here in the future, what kind of staff impacts and change, that we, we have technology infrastructure that can keep a record of all those high-prone areas for flooding and certain rain events.
Okay, anybody else? Hey, thanks a bunch, and thanks for your continued great work, you, you do a very tough, challenging job very well.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, any council liaison reports? Yeah, Michael?
Mayor, I do have a liaison report, and I also have something to share in council comments, but I'll, I'll, so I'll, I'll do both, not now, I'll do, I'll do the council comments after the liaison report. But anyhow, what I wanted to share was, and I know, Mayor, that you likely will have remarks about the five-year anniversary of May 31st, but I'd just like the, as the, as one of the two liaisons along with Councilmember Wooten to the 531 Memorial Committee, to just recognize the tireless and really outstanding work of the members of the 531 Memorial Committee in their role in shepherding the design, and as we move forward, the construction of the 531 Memorial, the site was dedicated last week, of course, and it's one of the finest committees I've ever had the privilege to be associated with, comprised of family members, people whose lives were impacted by the 531 tragedy, experts in design, architecture, landscaping, mental health, public safety, it's a really extraordinary committee, and they continue to do an excellent job in their work, and I just want to thank them for their part in the five-year memorial, and as we move forward into the construction phase for all of their efforts.
And I thank you and Sabrina Wooten and all the members of the committee, it was a very challenging and emotional undertaking that I, I think really came through, you know, with every positive outcome. Okay, any council comments at this point? Michael, you have a council comment?
I do, I have a council comment. I want to share that, along with Councilmember Ross Hammond and Councilmember Schulman, who's a member of the Neptune Festival Committee for the 50th Anniversary, we attended the poster luncheon today where the Neptune Festival poster and artist was revealed, and of course, the Neptune Festival is the official celebration of the city of Virginia Beach and the celebration of life in Virginia Beach, all, for all citizens of Virginia Beach. And the poster was revealed, the artist was a woman teacher from First Ponyo High School, where Councilman Taylor and I attended high school, not together, but, but we both did attend high school together, it's District Six, Mr. Remick's district. Devin Miller, who's an art teacher at FC, created the poster, which is also a mural, so for the first time, the Neptune Festival will have a mural. The artist, Ms. Miller, is involved with other murals in the Vine Creative District and has used her artistic expression to collaborate with the Samaritan House to raise awareness about domestic violence and the other issues that the Samaritan House supports our community through, and it was just a really nice event, and I'm pleased to see, as, as we all know, we've prioritized culture, arts, creative expression as part of the uniqueness of Virginia Beach, and it's really exciting to see the Neptune Festival also celebrating creative expression and artistic creation as part of their poster, and by establishing a mural and as part of their 50th Anniversary, so I'm thankful to all the members of the staff and the council colleagues who were there, it was a really nice event, and it's a cool poster that I think represents, you know, celebration of beach life, so thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to also offer comments about 531, in, in a different aspect, certainly, I, I would be remiss if I did not point out the conversations, sometimes I see, receive emails, and, and sometimes I see information on social media about the, the 531 victim families, and again, I would be remiss if I did not mention that there are still families who do need extended support and are asking for that support and assistance, certainly have been reached out to several times about some of these concerns, and for that reason, I've also reached out to some of my colleagues as well to let you know that I have received the correspondence, and there are folks who are asking to meet, to talk about these concerns and to find out ways to address them. The second comment that I have is regarding the community meeting that I had last week with Chief Nutigate, I received a lot of good feedback on that community meeting, Chief Nutigate was there to address the concerns of Level Green neighborhood regarding some past shootings, youth violence, and so on, and we did have several members show up from the community, and they referenced their concerns, which ranged from a desire to have community policing where the community's presence is increased to address certain areas, there was a concern about gang violence in the neighborhood, and some other disturbing issues there, and so, the community has asked for an increased police presence, and other resources, as has been mentioned, like Parks After Dark, continued resources for activities in the community as well. Chief Nutigate had an opportunity to address these concerns and agree to make sure that we're providing increased police presence in the neighborhood, we've certainly have had police presence there, we have an officer, and officers who are assigned to the neighborhood and have been so in the past, but there has certainly been an increased police presence there, I've been reached out to by some of the neighbors, and they have said that they see police riding bicycles and they're back certainly out in the neighborhood, which is very good, and I want the community to know that, that Chief Nutigate is responding to your concerns. Also, he had an opportunity to talk about ShotSpotter and how that program is certainly, can be extended to Level Green, that neighborhood District Seven, which is great, and he mentioned that it would certainly help with when there are shots being fired, tracking those shots and sending out units right away. He also mentioned that when neighbors hear gunfire, you have to call 911 and report it, because some residents have not been doing that, and that is essential to making sure that you report and document what's happening, whatever the crime is, what's happening, it's on record, and they are sending resources out to your community. So, if you are hearing gunshot fires, you do need to call 911 so this information can be recorded and police can be sent out to the neighborhood. I thought that was a very good area to certainly address with the community. He also had a chance to talk about the Real Time Crime Center, which is certainly very exciting to know that we have, up and running in the city of Virginia Beach, it opened last week, and there is certainly high-tech equipment, cameras, and other technology that is being used throughout the city to increase response to crime, to track crime, and so that's certainly very hopeful in addressing some of the concerns that the community has about safety and crime. And so, again, I say that the meeting went very well, was a very good dialogue between the chief, myself, and the community, and so I look forward to continuous conversations about keeping our neighborhood safe. I will also add that I've mentioned before, certainly on our agenda, we have a, an item that I've asked to, for the city manager to find ways to increase funding, to expand the Parks After Dark program in Level Green in terms of finding resources, and so I look forward to moving forward with that item to ensure that we are addressing the safety needs of the Level Green neighborhood. Also, I am hosting an ice cream social in Level Green in the neighborhood to invite residents out, and, and everyone who would like to participate to come together in fellowship, and, and certainly have a chance to talk about further concerns that they may have, and that will be Saturday, June 8th, and it will start at noon, and so please come out to the Level Green neighborhood and the park area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and if I could just chime in along that line, you know, to follow through, you know, once again, crime is a primary concern in our city, you know, the tragedy at the Carnival, Mount Trashmore, which was indeed sobering, I did reach out to my colleague, Mayor Tuck in Hampton, we had the, you know, 75 Cent Mayor's Youth Violence Task Force, and we're going to be really convened in an expedited meeting, because once again, crime honors no boundary, and I think, you know, we've had a number of efforts where the chief executive officers and our police have been working together, but once again, this is a, you know, type of thing that, you know, would affect all of us, and the thing is, you know, once again, Sabrina, I heard many, many good reports about the meeting that you had with Nutigate that was, you know, very, very productive, so we have to work definitely locally, and even, you know, with Rosemary's team, but also, we got to work regionally, because, you know, we have to really tackle that as a region, and I'm sorry, it was Amelia, Jennifer, and then Rosemary. And, and sometimes I have, you gotta, you gotta lean across the table, okay?
Well, thank you, and I, a couple of things happened this weekend, really very exciting. I want to congratulate the Cultural Affairs Department, they coordinated an African-American Music Month, we're glad you were able to come out, and one of the new initiatives our board for the Virginia African-American Culture Center approved was a way of giving back, so what we've been doing is giving scholarships to graduating African-American students, seniors, and we're trying to do it regionally. So, at that event, we gave two scholarships to students who are going to be studying music or the performing arts, and we're there, one's going to James Madison University, the other at Norfolk State, and the mayor was there to help us give that out, along with Dr. Deirdre Gonzalez Jackson from Virginia Wesleyan, who also serves on our board, and then we also gave out in Norfolk, another two sets of scholarships, and these are 500 each for these students, because if you heard the parents, how hard it is now for these students going, the smaller things that they need. So, theirs was to do with students who were working on Africaner, Black studies, and each of these students had to write essays, and the last one will be given out during Juneteenth in Chesapeake, so gradually, we're making this regional outreach, and those students have to go to an HBCU institution, so we're trying to encourage our youth, because if they're doing some positive things, that will reduce the amount of crime that we see. The other thing that I really enjoyed was going out behind the scene, and we are thankful to our convention, Visitors Bureau, Councilmember Palushia and I were out there, amazing how they coordinated what they did, but the scariest thing for me was when that L missile hovercraft, my goodness, it is big, it stopped everyone, and when it turned around, we got a nice shower.
I loved it.
So, it was wonderful to see how many things were going on this weekend without any incidents. We had the Jackalope going, we had the art festival and the murals, we had that military part, we had the June, the reggae, which had about 13,000 in that area, we had the auto show, and we had something going on at the Sports Flex. All were able to accommodate them, they were well organized, and I want to say a special thank you. And I want to say a special thank you and congratulations to that team. And then I had to have some pictures done because this affects our future generation. As you can see, five-year-olds were on skateboards. Three years old out there. I said, I have to bring pictures so you can really see that. And we had people from Spain, from England, so many other places who came out for this whole festival. So you can see how little these people are. I have to show you all that way.
Did you get on a skateboard?
I did not get on a skateboard. You can see these are two, one is five-year-old, the other is 10. And this little shrink was out there on those huge, what is it called? It's like a U-shaped.
Bird ramp.
What is it called?
A bird ramp, I think.
Bird ramp.
Just dropped.
And I'm going to talk to the parents. Say, "How is your heart?" They said, "Well, they love doing it and we're excited." But anyway, it was a really wonderful showing of how we can do so much in a safe. And all of our security were out there. I've got VIP treatment as we scooted around on the station, talking to the people. So congratulations, well done to our convention and bureau group. Bill Kelly, Nancy Hellman, Brandy Brumpton, and all the rest of the staff, especially Ashley and Heather, who also helped me. I think that's it.
No, thank you, Amelia. And be assured that the mayor will never be on a skateboard or jump out of a perfectly good airplane, trust me. Okay, Jennifer.
I have two updates regarding District 10. The first is regarding the NAMI project. So a little over a week ago, VBDC and NAMI hosted an information session for residents of District 10, excuse me, for residents of Buckner Woods, which is the neighborhood directly adjacent to the parcel that's proposed for the NAMI project. And so I attended as a neutral observer, just to kind of hear what's going on, the residents' perspective, NAMI perspective, and see what's what. And so this is the second meeting that the Buckner Woods residents have participated in regarding this project. The first one took place maybe the end of last year. I hosted an information session at Buckner Woods and NAMI, or not NAMI, but VBDC came and, you know, there was some initial reservations, but the neighbors were promised that they would be a part of the process. And so they were like, let's see this process play out. So they participated in the second meeting and towards the end, I was kind of observing body language and, you know, hey y'all, like, what do you think? It just, you know. And the consensus that I took away is that the residents felt unheard. They felt that the process actually moved quite far ahead from the first discussion that they were a part of. Because of the second meeting, the residents were given design options for what the building would look like. And for them, they didn't realize that the proposal had moved that far, even though it will still be maybe at least two years or something until actually it gets to the point of construction. But I, I did share the feedback with VBDC so that they were aware of some of the concerns. And so I'll share with you as well. So the site floods, the site is small. And so when looking at all the options that are going to be placed on the site, the questions were, how will parking fit here and how will all these resources fit? And where will kids play if children are a part of this community? So the, the tenor of the residents was kind of a resigned acceptance that they have the feeling that this project is going full steam ahead. So like, whether they like it or not, it's going to get approved. And they're frustrated about that because it's a pretty small and close-knit community. But also, I do want to commend VBDC staff for reaching out and trying to find some sort of resolution that can, I don't know that it would be a win-win in this scenario, but that would be at least acceptable to residents as they're thinking about being good neighbors with them. So I gave that feedback to VBDC, and I wanted to share that, yeah, thank you, I wanted to share that with y'all as well. And, you know, and I'll continue updating as the project and the process moves forward. The second update for District 10 is yesterday was a ribbon cutting for Oak Springs Park. So in our last budget during reconciliation, you all accepted $150,000 into the budget. And so we were able to upgrade the park and include a fitness sit, or area. So it's a very big park. So it's, it's a lot of unused green space. And there's a playground for kids. And the nice thing about this upgrade, it was, Oak Springs was identified by Parks and Rec as an underdeveloped park because there is so much unused space. So now adjacent to the play area, adults and older kids and teenagers can work out. I tried one of the machines and it's all fitness. So it's all like, you know, things. So I went and I went to push it and I was like, this works, you know? And they were like, it's body weight. I was like, oh, no. I couldn't push it. I was like, ugh. So I'll be out there using all that equipment, but all of it's body weight. So, you know, you just give it your best. But I do want to thank Dr. Ken Chandler for coming out and Michael Kirschman, the director of Parks and Rec, Chad Morris. I do want to shout out Joe Latham with Playground Specialist, Inc., because they designed and installed the project. And there was a lot of fun energy. There was one gentleman there who said he'd already been using it. So like, we cut the, he was like, oh, I was already using this, which is really good because that's what it's there for. So it's located between Holland off of Dahlia Road and it's just a really nice space. So if you're, if you don't already go out there, if you're near that area, please utilize it. And thank you all for the support for that upgrade in the budget. Thank you to Parks and Rec and for the city staff for getting that done.
Okay, we're going to go Rosemary, Work, and then Barbara, and then Josh.
A couple of things. One, I wanted to shout out to the Vibe, their arts festival and all the beautiful designs that they've had. I mean, they just, it just keeps getting goodyear and goodyear of the artwork that they're, they're doing there. It's absolutely incredible. And secondly, Dominion Energy is meeting with the citizens of Croatan because of the sea valve clemming through and all of the noise and the disruption that's created for Croatan. And so this will be the second community meeting. And Dominion is trying very, very hard to put things to mitigating the sound and the vibrations and the lighting and all of that that's been disrupted to the neighborhood. So tomorrow night, we're having that meeting at 5:30 at the south building of the aquarium. Thirdly, as, as we all know, Councilmember Taylor has submitted his letter of resignation because he's running for mayor. And what we have to do, and I've, I've talked to Mark Stiles about this, we need to vote on, or to send it to Circuit Court to call for a special election. And so we'll have that on our next voting agenda if I didn't get that right.
No, so you, you have it correct, Vice Mayor. It would be a resolution directing my office to file a writ of special election with the Circuit Court, which would then cause the Circuit Court to issue a, an order of calling the special election.
So.
And we will have that ready to put on your agenda on the 18th.
Right. Do we know what the filing date is for that?
The collective "we" does, but the me sitting here doesn't. But the other half of the collective "we" is walking down the.
Are you the W or are you the E?
I'll be the E today. It's 81 days prior to the November election, so I believe that's August 16th. It's Friday. And we'll, we'll include that in the agenda request for the, the action.
So that'll be on our next agenda.
All right, Work.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just highlight what Councilwoman Ross Hammond just spoke about and thank the, not only the CBB staff, but also the Resort Management Office, and also thank this body and the city for supporting Jackalope Sports Festival, Action Sports Festival, the USO Presentation, United Service Organization, as well as the Point Break Reggae Festival. We also invested in that organization. I heard from a lot of constituents in District Six and also around the city about this engages our citizens as well as visitors. So it was a great weekend in the city, almost anywhere we were, but there were a lot of thousands of people. And also the Vibe Street Art Festival was, was highly successful as well. So it was a great place to be last weekend.
Yeah, good stuff going. Barbara.
The things that happened last weekend left out was the annual 4H Livestock Show and Sale, which occurred last weekend and totally volunteers with, with all the parents and the families and so forth, assisting these young people throughout the time that they have raised their animals and then have the show and sale on Friday at the Ruhrton Facility, which of course was totally raised by volunteers and our Ruhrton Clubs and is available to public things such as this. And I think we just don't thank enough all of the things that go on in the city that are done by volunteer groups that don't ask for any money from the city. And another thing, another thing that's come from volunteers is the local history group from the, that meets at the Senior Resource Center has now produced the second publication. That book is now available. It enumerates all of the, well, it's called Prince of San County Graves, Fields, Farms, and Churches. Enumerates all of these cemeteries that are located all across the city that people wonder about. And it, it gives the address of the cemetery and who's there, who the people are there with their birth and death dates, which I think will give our, our people who particularly are interested in genealogy and finding their ancestors an opportunity to really know that background. So that book is now available along with the first book that, that was done a few years ago. And we're gradually getting quite a good history of our southern part of the city. Of course, this covers the whole city as far as the graves, they're over the whole city.
I was just going to ask you, is, do they have it according to race and all of this or it's just everybody?
It's everybody.
And how much is it?
$22 and that includes tax.
Okay.
It, it just, of course, when you look at a tombstone, it's going to have sometimes other information on it, but we couldn't validate it all enough to do anything. So what we have is the address of the cemetery, the people who are there, their birth dates and death dates. But we have an index, which the printing company just had all kinds of headaches doing, but it had to be done in order to make it worthwhile. If you know the name of an ancestor you're looking for or a family you're looking for, you look in the index and find out exactly where the pages are that they're covered. But it's everybody.
Congratulations. I mean, that's a lot of work.
That's a lot of work.
Darn right it was.
That's a lot of work.
You know, at the risk of opening up a can, you know, the strawberry festival, you know, that was iconic for the year and really emphasized, you know, the, you know, the vibrance of our agricultural community. Is there any, you know, potential thought, you know, keep it in Prince of San or have it maybe at the sportsplex or with that, you know? Because once again, I think if we have these events, let's have them all over the city, you know, not just the oceanfront. What's your thoughts about that, Barbara?
Well, the people who were the organizers and the people who made it happen, many of them are simply not available now to, to continue it. Takes a lot of people to bring one of those things on. And of course, the big thing that, that they are lacking is, is parking in, in the area. It was always done on private property, which now, you know, maybe is doing other things. So it was a decision of the, the people who were the organizers and the board of, of the strawberry festival. And it, it has been missed a lot. Whether another group will want to do such a thing or not, that would, you know, be up for them. But we still grow strawberries. And unfortunately, I think maybe some people thought without the festival, we didn't have strawberries anymore.
That should be celebrated. But I'm just saying because once again, at least in that area, there's parking and there's other things. It was just a bunch of folks out there having a good time.
Everybody loved it.
Especially the witch.
Oh, yeah. The witch.
Josh?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And just to pile on accolades alongside my fellow colleagues with all that was going on at the oceanfront this weekend for, for simultaneous activations. In addition to the CBB and Resort Management, I just want to throw a shout out to our Public Works Beach Operations folks who, I mean, we drove around on a gator and they do a tremendous job of staging the beach and, you know, building that, that beach berm to protect the equipment and all of the, you know, just activities going on there. They, they do, they do a Herculean task. And also a shout out to our public safety professionals and our sheriff's office and our police department and EMS for, for doing a wonderful job, keeping us safe and, and all the, I, I think it was estimated 50,000 attendees this, this weekend were visiting our, our oceanfront. And Councilwoman Ross Hammond, you mentioned the hovercraft. One of the coolest parts about living in Thurgood in District Nine is waking up at 8:00 AM every morning and hearing that national anthem from Little Creek. And hearing the low hum, you can hear the low hum of the hovercraft, you know, on occasion. So it's, it's amazing the reach that, that, and all of that has. But I, I wanted to just direct your attention briefly to, or maybe not briefly, to, to a letter that I included in our, in our council package. It was a follow-up to an email I had sent to, to the council earlier last week relative to the, the proposed formation of a stormwater management implementation advisory group. I, I, I sent that email out to you suggesting that I, I wanted to continue this conversation that, that began about a year ago. And, and then I, I also wanted to put that, that email correspondence in the form of a letter so that I could, that I could make sure that the, both my, the rationale and the drafts of the, of the proposed ordinance were before the public and before the body so that everybody had a chance to take a look at them. This, this originated from, you know, just really the fact that we have, and rightfully so, the strictest stormwater regulations in the, in the Commonwealth. And given our geographic location and our unique challenges with respect to sea level rise and recurring flooding, that makes sense. And we are making historic investments in, in flooding infrastructure that will pay off, you know, for generations to come. At the same time, we, we have challenges being felt by the development community. We have housing challenges, housing shortage. We have inflation, we have rising cost of human business, supply and labor. Nothing is getting cheaper. And, and we need to be able to be a place that, that fosters new economic activity, that encourages new, 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 new growth in responsible ways and resilient ways that, that we don't make the mistakes of the past of filling in wellens, that we don't make the mistakes of the past of, of creating neighborhoods with inadequate stormwater infrastructure. So I think a draft of this proposed ordinance has been before the body on at least three occasions. And, and I've, I've invited comment from everybody. And, and I've, and I've received comment and I really do appreciate it. And the, the last couple of times that I've, that I've put the ordinance in front of the body, I think one of, one of them, we, we had a hurricane or some sort of tropical storm coming that weekend. So, and then we, we had some other challenging items that, that dealt with, you know, the, I guess quasi-wetlands issues come before the body. And, and what I really wanted to do was make sure that we were just focused on what it is, was, what it is that, that was at hand here. And we had, of course, the budget that, that we got through. So most importantly, I want to make sure that the body knows and the public knows what the intent of this ordinance is. It is, it is, it is not to make it easier for the development community to build things. It is, it is to help incentivize and encourage outcomes that align with policy objectives. And those include building, building things in places that don't impact neighborhoods in negative ways, building things in places that don't present environmental challenges, building things in places that don't increase our, increase our flood risk. We, we have, you know, we're engaged right now in a comprehensive plan update. I hope this body, in connection with that comprehensive plan update reaffirms the, the importance of our strategic growth areas, those areas of our city that are infrastructure-rich, there are high-ground. they're high ground, and they're close to major transportation corridors. Development in those areas don't worsen flooding. They don't, they're not abutting in adjacent to neighborhoods. So you will see in this revised ordinance references to our focused action plan and our collective desire to revisit and reaffirm the SGA plan in that regard. We, and I, I was sensitive and thank you, Councilwoman Henley, for, for working with me on, on the latest revisions. We felt the, the, the number of, of, and geographic distribution of some of the community member, non-expert appointees of this group, just, we wanted to clarify the fact that, that we wanted people who, who knew the subject matter of what we were talking about in the room. But, but we also wanted to make sure that the light was being shed on this and that there was community participation. So, and I've, I've revised the proposed composition of this group to be 11 subject matter experts with really heavy environmental representation. So three environmental and resiliency professionals, two engineering consultants, two attorneys with environmental and land use experience, two members of the real estate development community, and two representatives from environmental protection and conservation organizations, as well as two resident representatives who may but need not have relevant subject matter experience. There's, there's a whole bunch of reasons why I think putting this group together makes a lot of sense. I think over and over again, the development community and, and maybe some of us in the council feel that these, these, the, our stormwater standards and our, our regulations feel like we're trying to put a, a square peg in a round hole. And, you know, I can, I can recount at least just quickly a couple of examples. You know, there, there are people who are trying to build things in our community that are incentivized to cut down trees rather than to preserve them, cutting down trees in, in favor of building wet ponds. I've experienced a challenge in, in, in my part of the community with respect to a developer who is trying to, instead of build something big, build adaptive reuse and, and, and to, to keep the footprint that exists within the existing development that exists on the property. But they're running into challenges because they're disturbing more than 2,500 square feet of space. And that requires them to submit a very costly and time-consuming stormwater analysis. And, and then there's also another example I can provide you, a developer who has, who has gone through the process and submitted eight different submittals through the stormwater modeling and has not been able to achieve that 0.00 standard. But they were able to achieve that 0.00 standard to within 1,000th of an inch. And, and while, while I understand and the desire is not to, to, to do anything to the standard, I just, I, I, my hope is that, is that this group of professionals along with some community members could help bring some rationality a, a little bit to that process. And because, and, and we also have cost share, a cost share CIP with zero criteria as to who gets what, you know, you know, in, in terms of the, the cost share on infrastructure improvement. So if we can develop some criteria, if people are doing things, if you're leaving more green space than you, than you otherwise might be if you're building an SGA. So I know I've gone on and on, but I, I, I really want the, the public and the council to understand. I under, I understand this is a very important topic to this community. I understand it's a number one priority. And, and I understand it's a, it's a politically sensitive one. I mean, truthfully. So, but the desire here is not to, is not to go after or to, to subject the southern part of the city to increased development. That is not, that is not the intent. So, so anyway, this is, I just wanted to put that in front of everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Just in line with Councilman Shulman's comments, I have to speak with several constituents. They consider, they continue to make the statement that it appears we're doing, taking actions outside of the comprehensive plan while the comprehensive plan is being drafted. So I did share with Councilman Shulman that this could be perceived as another one of those instances because we've yet to actually get the comp plan. And, and they are still very adamant about that 75-word commitment that many are on the record as saying that we would keep. So I commend Councilman Shulman on the efforts. I do believe your motivations are pure, but also do continue to hear from constituents that are concerned that our comp plan and the way it's going is not necessarily in line with the promises we've made. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yep, I'm gonna keep it brief. So I just wanted to say two things, two quick things. One is, is I had the privilege to be invited to go to the 2024 Virginia Fallen Firefighters' Memorial this weekend. We had 17 firefighters and EMS personnel from around the state that were recognized, one of the largest groups. A lot of them lost their lives due to occupational cancer. Matt was on the, the jet crash with the carbon fiber. But, and then others obviously lost in the line of duty. I, I just want to say real quick that I was there for Chevy, obviously. And as I've said before many times, when I spoke of what it means to be a Virginia Beach firefighter, Matt embodied what was my example. And that's, there's just no finer firefighter the city of Virginia Beach has ever had. So I wanted to say that. And then also, I just wanted to say to the staff and to everybody about the 531 memorial, I've attended, just like I've pretty much attended every one of them. I was on the scene that day. I was in the command structure. I was part of it. And I've come back every year and see the, the hard work and the dedication. And I'm glad, I'm glad to see the, the model, you know, come out of the ground. We're going to have a really nice park memorial, if you will, for it. So I think it's, I think it's going to be nice. And I hope everybody can find some solace that it's happening and, you know, help us all. And the, the spokeswoman, I'm drawing a blank on her name.
Kelly.
Yeah, Kelly. She was, what a phenomenal way she spoke and brought forth so many different aspects from those of us that were there to the ones that were, you know, affected by just losing their friends and loved ones. Just everything was done, was, was really top shelf in my mind. And I was proud to, I was proud to have been there that day. We did a lot of, a lot of hard stuff that you, you would hope nobody would ever have to do. But, you know, that's why you sign up for the job. But, but, but the remembrance part is very special. And my hat's off to everybody that helped put it on. So thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
I'll be very brief, Mayor Dyer. Just wanted to share with the public that Mayor Dyer and I yesterday got to participate in the Virginia Summit to Combat Anti-Semitism, Joining Forces for a Hate-Free Community. And Mayor Dyer opened up the, one of the openings, some opening remarks. I was able to sit on a panel, which was Uniting Communities: Best Practices to Secure Local Jewish Life and Communal Institutions. And I think it's important, as we've seen recently with some of the news releases, some of the issues taking place, that we don't necessarily let this go by without acknowledging that there are still groups within our city that are experiencing hate, bigotry, and bias. And the, the theme of this conference, as you said, quite often, Mayor, you're working with the city of Hampton, is this is not just a Virginia Beach thing, but a regional issue. And I did not agree with some statements a couple of weeks ago that the incidences at Kinsale High School were bullying. We have to be very clear that racism and hatred is not bullying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. That was a very good session. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Kay Rosemary?
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions. Anybody have any?
Number four. Sent a note to the manager. How many signs are we talking about?
Reaching out to staff to get a sense of how many signs are remaining from what was there from the 90s.
About 30.
So not, okay, not that many. And then number five?
Okay, so number five, do we want to pull it? Or if those people who want to vote no, just want to register a no vote, how would y'all like to do this?
No.
No.
Yeah, I'm voting no.
Are there speakers?
No speakers on anything tonight, other than open mic. Jennifer?
No.
Okay, if I could just say on this one, and you know, I appreciate, you know, both sides of the argument.
Do you get my mail?
Yeah. But, you know, with my, your permission, you know, sometimes I really don't use my other hat. But, you know, speaking from somebody that, you know, does have a doctorate in organizational leadership, and I also teach, you know, government and includes human resource management, budgeting, and some of my other experiences. You know, I find, you know, when we talk about collective bargaining, it's a very, very sensitive and, you know, divisive, you know, topic. And the thing is, the only intent about this is to get out the information, the objective information about the pros and the comms. And the thing is that when we go into making a long-term decision that is going to have, you know, it's going to affect the way that we operate and it's going to affect our budget, you know, let's at least get some of the ideas behind it.
So I, I would just like to say, you know, it's procuring a study that bothers me. These studies, we're just throwing out a lot of money to do. And I'm not so sure we couldn't do this with ourselves and with our people if we wanted to do a SWOT analysis. To something that's probably going to cost many, many thousands of dollars when I think it's something we could produce.
Well, the, the thing is, I think one of the things about using the academic way is, it's, it's bias. It shows, you know, you know, some integ, academic integrity and things of that nature and are best to make it objective and eliminate bias. So that's my thought.
Let me make sure I've got all the no's. I've got Barbara, Sabrina, Hutch, Jennifer. Chris. And then I have a question on number seven. I know, first of all, let me say, you know, the Parks After Dark program came out of the youth violence task force that, that I worked on with Chief Severa and Reverend Daniels. So I'm really glad that it's so popular and people want to do it. It's just really great. And though we haven't gotten the results of first year, I'm really hopeful. And I'm, I'm just really happy that people are pleased with it. And I know when Council Lady Ross, Ralph, excuse me, brought it up for Green Run and it's in the budget, we can't do it until next summer because of staffing and all that. So I guess my expect, what I'm wondering is the expectation is the same thing, that this is not expected till next summer. Is that right?
That's, it looks like that's our understanding. And in order for staff to put it on successfully and well, it would have to be for next summer.
Is there anything else under ordinances and resolutions?
I'm good. In our discussion, we have all agreed that crime is taking place all across the city. And this, this was a pilot in one area. And I know there's been some recent violence in Level Green. And I applaud Councilwoman for advocating for our community. I do think there are several other communities, though, within our city if we actually were to see the data and to see the hotspots that could also benefit from the Parks After Dark program. And so again, instead of going one by one or one all, some in the budget, some out of the budget, I would prefer to get the information and then look at it holistically. So I'm just going to abstain because I don't have enough data to see if the, the level of violence is more so in Level Green than at Mount Trashmore in that community. There's some other communities. And so I'm just going to abstain from that until I actually get the report out from the first Parks After Dark and then the request that I made of the chief to give me the data on all of the hotspots that the youth are experiencing violence. Thank you.
And this came out of that committee that Western Bayside was supposed to be first, Green Run was supposed to be second, and Level Green was supposed to be third. So this, this was a staff recommended order, just to let you know.
Hey, Sabrina?
I, I just wanted to say, right, that it was certainly staff recommended. Level Green and Green Run were both considered for the next steps in terms of expanding the program. I, I also wanted to say in terms of data, the chief reported, chief communicated, reported that we had seven deaths in, throughout the city. Two occurred in Level. You could do the math in terms of the percentage, if you're into data. But two out of five. And so, you know, if I were to pose a data analysis or argument, I'd have significant evidence that shows Level Green is an area that certainly is deserving of consideration of expanding that program. But I also thought that when this program was initially talked about, the pilot started at Williams Farms. But it was my understanding that it would spread throughout the city as needed. That was the initial understanding that I had for this program. And certainly, from that understanding, I'm proceeding with this action based on the fact that it, it is something that we talked about as a study, as a pilot at one location. But the intention was always to spread it out throughout the city, no matter where you are. So perhaps that information can be, I don't know, provided to, to the city staff in terms of what the initial thought or the initial agenda was for Parks and Rec, or excuse me, Parks After Dark program was. But that's what I remember.
We can resubmit the report that came out when it was presented to the council.
Quickly, we have to get.
Okay, because I thought that it was Green Run next or not?
It was Level Green and Green Run.
It was before Green Run?
They were proposed together. And I mentioned that in the workshop that we had, I, I sent the information to everybody in an email, the date and even the marked time of that discussion that Mr. Kirschman talked about. Level Green and Green Run were considered at the same time due to statistics regarding crime in the neighborhood.
Okay, well, that means that we need to have additional funds to do the two next or what? That is important. That's all I'm asking. Because so far, even in the budget, we had mentioned Green Run. So now I'm hearing also Level Green. So we have to consider that enough money, we're going to do both at the same time. That's all I want. Clarification.
So from my understanding, with the resolution that's before council right now, is that council's asking in a two-week timeframe for the staff, through me, to bring forward an option on how we can fund a Level Green Parks After Dark next year, similar to how we're going to fund a Parks After Dark and Green Run for next year. In addition to that, there's also asking the city manager to consider, including continual funding for it in the next budget as well.
And are you going to also look at sites as well?
Yes. Vice Mayor, we will. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work out a plan of how we can propose it. As I mentioned before, Level Green Park is going to go under, is probably under construction as we speak right now. It'll be down for construction for probably about two years. It'll probably open in the summer of '26. So we probably need to work with partners and schools and maybe even additional park, Providence Park that Ms. wouldn't mention. But we'll give council options on how best to do that.
So nothing is in stone right now?
Correct. From the resolution that council's approving, it's asking staff to bring back a study on how best to do a Level Green Parks After Dark starting next year.
Okay, if we can move on to planning. Number one is the Military Aviation Museum, District Two.
Well, this has been under consideration for many months. And I think they've got some very good conditions to cover the concerns. So I, I haven't heard any opposition. I would say that I was out there Sunday for a wavy screening of a production that they have done in observance of the 80th anniversary of D-Day this week. And it was just very well done, very well attended, which is the way things are being done at the museum. And I think it's, it's fine to go forward. They seem to handle everything very well.
Number two, City of Virginia Beach and the Michaels Family, District Three. Number three, Milestone Manor LLC, District One. Number four, Michelle, additional use or rehabilitation center. That's District Five. I haven't heard any issues with that. I haven't heard any issues with that. Number five, Samantha Caro, District Five, that's short-term rail civic avenue, I'm fine with that. Number six, Suzanne in Holligan, District Six.
Yes, for consent.
Number seven and eight, there's two ordinances from the city with the zoning.
I think they're, they're good. The one which is going to allow the zoning administrator to do some of the EZA's work just individually, but I think it has to be done the way it says the ordinance does very closely so that any property owner who's nearby has an opportunity to object and then it would have to go to the ECA itself. So as long as we follow strictly this, this action, I think it can work.
Okay, we have everything on consent.
Okay, great. All right, here we go. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption from the open meetings approved by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Security matters. Discussions of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terror activity or specific security threats or vulnerabilities on briefings by staff members, legal counsel, law enforcement, emergency services, officials concerning actions to be taken in such matters or related to threat of public safety. Discussion of information excluded from this charter pursuant to section, subsection three or four from Section 2.237-05.2 where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or in the security of any facility, building, structure, information, technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to security to any governmental facility, most none, building or structure, the safety of persons in such facility, building, or structure pursuant to 72.237-119. Who gets to write this? Building one. Personnel matters. Discussions, considerations, or interviews for prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation as public officers, appointees, public, anybody pursuant to Section 2.237-11A1. And that's council appointments and also council appointees evaluation. So I have a motion.
Councilor Blitschke.
Hi.
Councilor Jensen.
Hi.
Councilor Hachston.
Hi.
Councilor Remick.
Hello.
Councilor Rossammon just stepped out.
Hi.
Councilor Rouse.
Hi.
Councilor Shulman.
Hi.
Councilor Taylor.
Hi.
Councilor Wooten.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Hi.
Mayor Dyer.
Hi, okay. We are reassessing.